Good evening, everybody. With the posted time having arrived and a quorum of members present, I'll call the Finance Committee for Tuesday, May 28, 2019, to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting from 5:14 of '19, copies of which are in the packets. Any revisions or corrections to those minutes necessary? If not, a motion to approve would be appropriate. Motion by Martins, is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, minutes are approved. Item number two is discussion of possible action regarding approving the contract for regional hazardous materials response team services with the state of Wisconsin. Every so often, we are required to renew our contract to serve as the area hazmat responder, and that time has come again. Public health and safety has unanimously recommended that we renew this agreement because if our area was not participating in this program, our nearest hazmat response would have to come from opposite ends of the state, either Eau Claire or somewhere in either Appleton or Oshkosh areas. So, long time to respond to a spill or an accident if we didn't have that capability here. You'll see in the meeting packet that the fiscal impact of the contract every year is $104,347, but we have participated in that program historically, and our fire department would continue to provide that service to the area if we renew the contract. Now, we have the fire chief and the deputy chief with us this evening. Does anyone have questions for them about the hazmat team or about the contract?
No questions, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion to approve, and then I might have a question.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the contract by nodding. Is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Go ahead with your question, Dave.
Maybe not. This is routine in its renewal. Again, was it annually or is it multi-year?
I think it's multi-year. Is it every two? She folds up her fingers, too.
Yeah, we have all the equipment and everything. It's all, it's nothing.
And all the training, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So, with a motion and a second on the floor, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed. That motion carries. Item number three is discussion of possible action regarding adopting modifications to the public depository's resolution. I think, Mary Ann, you have that item, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I don't know how this works, because when I have the word "documents" in the folder, the changes are noted on there, you know, like how it's got the draft, but now it's like a clean copy. So, I apologize for that. But, really, this is just housekeeping. So, River Valley Bank changed their name to Incredible Bank, and Marathon Savings Bank is now called Marathon Bank. And so, we're just basically making those changes in our public depository to reflect the new names of the bank. So, it's really more of a housekeeping issue, but I don't know why that happened. Okay.
Do we have a motion, then, to accept these revisions to amend the names of those financial institutions? Motion by Martins, is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. Item number four is discussion of possible action regarding the 2019 Room Tax Budget Modification Room Tax Commission awards.
So, the Room Tax Commission made their awards. If you recall, the statutes changed, and it really gave the authority for the expenditure of a portion of the room tax to the Room Tax Commission. So, they conducted their own grant application process, and based on that competitive process, they awarded grants to those entities that are listed on the budget modification. And so, I'm proposing that we modify the budget to reflect that allocation that the commission has authorized.
Okay. Do we have a motion, then, to accept those allocations and make them part of the budget? Motion by nodding, is there a second? Second by Martins. Further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. Item number five is discussion of possible action regarding the contract proposal from Pro-Locators.
So, and we've had just a brief discussion about this at a previous finance meeting. Pro-Locators contacted us, and they are a company that looks at all of the unclaimed property that's reported, either to a state or through open record requests that they submit to entities. And they said that they found a payment that was owed to the city of Wausau in the amount of $61,079. And they would not tell me any details about that payment but for, that it wasn't a tax payment, and that it was from an Illinois location from 2014. We kind of looked at all of our receivables, and we don't think we have an outstanding receivable for $61,000. And I did try to explain to the gentleman, if it's a tax payment, then the city would have already been made whole for that payment because the county settles with us annually. And so, the city would not be owed that money. He assured me it was not a tax payment. If we would sign an agreement with them, they have a finder's fee, so we would pay them $9,161.85 if this turned out to be a true receivable of the city. They also indicated that they don't take it out of the funds, we actually write them a check, so we don't have to be worried that we would pay them, and then we wouldn't get our $61,000. I went to the state of Illinois' unclaimed property site, and there was nothing that was owed to the city of Wausau. We actually, I had one of my staff members go to every state in the United States to see if we were on those lists, and there was no payment to us for $61,000. So, I have to admit, I don't know what to do in this situation. You know, if we sign the contract, so if you say, yes, we want to pursue this, the first thing I would do, then, is send the contract to the city attorney's office for review, and then it would go to common counsel for approval. I don't, I don't know what to do about this situation, because I've never experienced this. We've had, I guess, two other situations where we've hired contractors to look for money for us. One was in workers' comp. So, they did an independent workers' comp audit, and for every dollar they saved, they got 15 cents of it. And I think they made, you know, like, I don't know, it was nothing. I can't remember. The other one was telephone bills, that we had our telephone bills audited, and again, it was one of those where there was not a huge savings. I don't know what this dollar amount could be. Like I said, we've gone through our receivables, we are not aware of anyone owing us money. And we get open records requests, so laws state that people, like companies, as the city of Wausau does, we go through all of our checks that we've issued to people on an annual basis. And if they don't cash them after a certain period of time, based on the law, we submit that money to the state of Wisconsin as unclaimed, and then it sits there until someone claims it. So, the city doesn't get to just keep that money. And it doesn't matter if you're a government entity or a nonprofit or a corporation, everyone is supposed to go through that process. And these companies, like Pro-Locators, send us open record requests on a periodic basis, and they ask us for the outstanding checks or any amounts that we have on hand that are owed to others and have not been claimed. And we respond to those open record requests. So, you know, could Pro-Locators have submitted something like an open records request to someone, a company or an entity, and got this, and then that company has not submitted those funds to the state yet? But when I looked at the laws of Illinois, everyone should have submitted their payments to Illinois already.
Just based on the length of time?
Right. So, I don't really know what to tell you.
Well, I guess, question.
But I can tell you that we've been delaying this, and then, most recently, I got a really snarky email from this gentleman at Pro-Locators, like, I feel like I deserve time on the finance agenda. So, I put it on there.
Oh, well, we had, we got bigger fish to fry at those last couple meetings, so. But, that said, I guess, question number one is, is there any expectation, if we were to participate in this for this one amount, is there any expectation that this would be an ongoing relationship?
No.
So, one-time deal? One-time deal.
And I did ask for references. He gave me a couple of references. I was particularly interested in Wisconsin references. In every reference he gave me, the people were able to say, oh, yeah, I think we did get a payment, but the person you'd want to talk to is gone now. So, I really was not ever able to talk to somebody who had had actual experience with them, but they could remember a payment being received. Not, they were small payments, too, nothing like $61,000.
And so, we don't pay the $9,161 unless we get this money?
Right. And like I said, if you approve this, the contract would then go to the attorney's office for review.
For review, before we would participate in anything.
And then it would go on.
Did I understand you had to pay it first, and then it would?
No, it's once they reveal.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
And we collect the money, then we pay them. So, we have to cash the check or whatever and actually have the funds, and then we would pay them.
Because they didn't, they don't take it out of.
Right.
Depends on, must not be negotiable to.
Right.
It seems that we have little to lose by trying it, if there's no ongoing obligation, and if we only pay them if we get the money. I mean, that, it seems like a fairly safe bet, as long as the attorney, the city attorney would be okay with the contract language. I don't know, what are your thoughts, committee?
Would the attorney have anything to offer to us at this moment before we would make a decision yea or nay?
Well, and I haven't shared the contract with the attorney's office, so, you know. And there are multiple companies that do this, so they are a legit company, and they have been, you know, in business for a while, but.
Well, what if we would opt to pursue it on a singular case basis, assuming that the contract would be satisfactory to the city attorney following her review? Would that, I mean, that's, here she comes. Come on up, Ann.
Mark said scam, that was what was running through my head. Maybe it's not a scam. I'm happy to look at the contract, but that's something that our office could probably attempt to claim without you having to pay any finder's fee at all. We've done that once or twice in the past. I think from the state of Wisconsin, I mean, we could at least try it by looking up their laws. If it's in the state of Illinois, we should be able to follow their process and make a claim, and they'll tell us if there's anything there or not.
It's not on the state's list currently.
I know, but this guy just says it's in the state of Illinois.
The company was. The company that.
Holding the money.
That owes the money?
The company that reported they had this unclaimed check from the city.
Okay, but they won't tell us who that company is, so that's true. I wouldn't know who that is if it's not the state.
Right.
But there's, there's company, legit companies like that all over the place that will do your work for you for a 10 or 15 percent finder's fee. We've had those come up. I think Eric got one not too long ago, and it was something we were capable of obtaining without having to pay somebody to go out and get it for us. But in this case, as Mary Ann points out, we wouldn't know who the company is without it being identified to us.
Right. And I guess my thought is, is that if the contract and the terms of the agreement met with your approval, and we are not expected then to have an ongoing business relationship with the company.
Or pay anything in advance.
Or pay anything in advance. I mean, the worst-case scenario is that we collect $52,000-ish, so.
Right.
I mean, is that.
Happy to look into it, if that's what the committee would like to do.
Well, I'd be interested to having you look into it.
Okay.
Before it went to council.
Okay.
That's my thought. What, Mr. Smith, you have a pretty good take on finances?
Well, I think the odds that, the odds that we're getting here are a lot better than getting one in the local casinos. We are gonna pay $9,000 and give $52,000 back. I will take bets like that all day. I, right now, we're just approving to have the attorney take a look at the contract. We're willing to do anything. I think we should move this forward, and then it'll come back to, I don't know, if it comes back to finance and then council or.
Sure, yep, we can do that with the contract.
So, it'll come back to us again, so once Ann looks at it, if she says it's kosher, I'd go for it.
Okay. I think we can direct you by consensus with that.
Sure.
We wouldn't need to officially vote, so if the committee is all of the mind that they want Mary Ann and Ann to look into it further, so we can find out a little more, and then if it's legit, we bring it back and go forward?
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, they're all nodding. Okay. That takes care of, that takes care of item number five. Item six is discussion of possible action to incorporate the new reportable events in the post-issuance compliance policy.
This is another housekeeping item. So, back in the early 2000s, the Securities Exchange developed some new rules. So, what would happen is, you know, a government entity would issue bonds, and we would put together our official statement, which kind of tells a bondholder what our finances are like, what our economic base is like, and that would be the only thing that we would have to ever report to them. Now, once they changed the rules, we annually, they created this central clearinghouse, and annually, we have to submit our financial statements and other pieces of information to them on an annual basis, so that a bondholder doesn't have to run around, you know, like if you're a big investor, you could have bonds from, you know, 20 different government entities in your portfolio, and you're gonna have to chase around and go to all of these different government websites to see what their financial condition is like, because you're still holding those bonds. So, now, there's this central clearinghouse that we submit that documentation to every year. In addition to submitting annual financial information, they also created this list of reportable conditions that would alert a bondholder of maybe some financial difficulties that we were having. And there was, you know, the list that they considered to be reportable conditions. So, if we fell delinquent on making a debt payment, that would be something that a bondholder would be interested in. So, most recently, they added two new material events. So, we're just adding these to our policy that says we will report these if it's necessary. I mean, we would be required to do it anyhow, so that's why I consider it housekeeping. One of them is, you know, in the past, if we got a state trust fund loan, that was not a general obligation promissory note that was issued in the open market. So, we didn't have to tell this clearinghouse that we got that. Or when we got a loan from the foundations, we didn't have to report those either. Now, under this first bullet point, we would have to do that. Even a big lease, if it was material to the city, we would have to report that as a reportable condition. So, that would be one issue. And then, if we ever terminated something, a contract that was a financial obligation that was an indication of financial difficulties, there, again, we would have to report that. So, if we had a contract, I can't think of one offhand, and we were just terminating it because we didn't need it anymore, we wouldn't have to report that contract to this clearinghouse. But if we terminated it because we couldn't afford to do it because our financial condition had declined, then we would have to report it. So, it's just adding these two reporting conditions into the policy. And like I said, really, we would be obligated to do that regardless, so it's, it's basically housekeeping.
Okay. Do we have a motion, then, to add those two items to the reporting? Motion by Kelbock, second by Smith. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Item number seven is discussion of possible action regarding implementation of a new $15 monthly permit rate for Level 5 of the Jefferson Street ramp. And I guess, Mary Ann, if you want to start us off on that?
So, we've gotten feedback, if you recall, our parking study said that we should look to see if there was more affordable parking for employees within the downtown. We already were offering a $5 parking permit for the rooftop on the Jefferson ramp and in Lot 8 on River Drive. So, to further that, we looked at utilization of our parking facilities, and with our new parking software, we'll be able to manage different rates on different levels of the ramps. And so, we had looked at Level 5 of the ramp, so that's the level below the roof, and said that's really underutilized. And, you know, we have kind of gotten feedback that that ramp is pretty tall, and people don't like having to go up so many levels, and so it is a underutilized level. And so, we thought that this would be offering a reduced rate, so then we would have the $38 for levels 1 to 4, $15 per month on Level 5, and then $5 on Level 6.
Okay. With that, and I know that our agenda item tonight is just Level 5 of the Jefferson Street ramp, but recently, after we began to, after we put this item on the agenda, there is some interest from within the River District stakeholders to look at other areas of our parking ramps, perhaps in the mall and in others, that where there's also underutilized space, like, say, the basement of Penny's, or the top of the, you know, Sears Mall ramp or whatever, where there's, you know, not the most desirable spaces, but they're still out there. And for us to consider making those reduced or perhaps even free, depending on what level of desirability they have. And so, maybe that's something we could look at if we get this item, get across, over the hill with this item. We should take a look at the other parking facilities downtown and see if we could.
The one thing with the Penny's and Sears, I would add, is that our agreement with the mall specifies that all permit parkers are supposed to park in the basement.
Okay.
So, if we change that to be a lower level, we're gonna reduce everyone's permit then because they already are supposed to be parking down there. And right now, we have a hard time monitoring that because we have the cashiers, and once they're in there, we don't know where the permiters are.
Who's who.
In the new situation, we will be able to monitor where the permit parkers, and the same would be held true in the Sears. They are supposed to be parking up above a certain threshold, and once we start enforcing that, we'll be able to, to make sure that occurs. But if we reduce the rate, it will be reduced for everyone, and, you know, that will be a decline in our revenues.
Right. And that's something that, you know, maybe before we would even bring it to this committee, I think we'd want to analyze what the impacts look like.
Sure.
And what the volumes are. And so, maybe what we could do is maybe have an internal meeting, at least a fact find between the River District stakeholders and at least our staff.
Sure.
To figure out what the impact of that, what it looks like, and how many people might even bother to use it.
Yep.
And determine if it's viable or not. And if it is, then we could get it onto a future agenda.
Okay.
If that's.
We can do that.
And so, committee members, do you have thoughts on this Jefferson ramp idea with the lower rate there on Level 5?
The Jefferson ramp, does it have an elevator?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so people are not parking because they don't want to drive up that far, or they don't want to take the elevator up that far to get their car once they're done?
The feedback that I've heard is, well, it's a couple. One is, they don't like driving up that, you know, the turn radius on that ramp is a little challenging, and so, as you're going up, you have to make corrections to your driving, and people don't like to do that. And so, it is challenging going up. It's in the least convenient, or a less convenient area because you're not attached to a skywalk at any of those levels. And I think, you know, people prefer to be where others are, and so you often find that they cluster in the same area, just because of safety and numbers or whatever.
So, you think by lowering the fee, people are just gonna flock up there and it'll be populated?
We have very little participation in the $5 on, on the roof, but, you know, that's, again, another turn that they have to do, and it's an open roof. So, in the winter, you know, they're a little bit more snow.
Scraping windows and whatnot.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yep, come on up, Mr. Craig.
Thank you very much. Mark Craig with Compass Properties, 814 Adams Street. Just one comment about this $5 or fifth-floor issue. Since no one is currently parking on that upper level at $5, and some people don't know about it, like, if you call City Clerk's Office, sometimes the staff does not, is not even aware that the $5 rate exists. But, and I know we met recently and talked about the $15 rate, but I'm just wondering if we could think about, maybe it's $5 for the fifth floor and $5 for the upper level to try and get people to move to those levels? Because I think part of the concern that we've had with parking is we're trying to move people off the street or off of prime spots and motivate them to park on these upper levels. And a lot of them are downtown employees, many of them are minimum wage, and maybe if we could market it at $5 for fifth and sixth floor, that might create more of an audience. I agree with you, Dennis, I don't think people are gonna just flock up there. But we could motivate them, and I could help get the word out to the tenants at the Gateway Building and City Square, and Blake could help in downtown, City Pages could put it in their newspaper. But it's a $5 rate, instead of creating this $15 rate, which we're not losing much revenue because we're not really generating anything.
Well, I would disagree with that, Mark, given that you have tenants that are, you're gonna try to sell this $15, and they're gonna move out of.
No, we're gonna buy the $5 rate and offer that they could possibly move on to the fifth floor with a covered level. Because as you pointed out, upper level is $5, and during the winter, some people don't want to park up there. There's elevators on only two corners of that ramp, staircases, there's cleanliness, there's a number of issues. But my, my point is, if we can get people to start moving on to the fifth and sixth floor and keep it simple at a $5 rate, I might be able to motivate them to get up there.
Well, and that, you know, that said, I think that, that's where I think we could, in a number of facilities, have a look at what the utilization is and what the need is.
Right.
And project what we figure the fiscal impact would be and what the usership or the interest would be if we had an idea. I mean, obviously, with the new parking system implementation, it's easier for us to know who's where, but our goal still is to get the downtown employees out of the Third Street parking stalls. And if there is utilization there, and get them to the ramps, you know, and I don't know if we have that problem as bad as we ever did, but for a long time, that was the problem. The spaces wouldn't cycle out because people would leave their car for half a day, so.
In marketing, it's all about keep it simple. So, if you have one rate, $5, fifth and sixth floor, you can probably market that pretty well.
It will be easy, because, again, people will be purchasing on the passport, so it will, if they pick that location, it will show them the permits that are available.
Whichever rate it might be.
Right, whichever rate. So, you know, I, I think that it will be pretty easy for people to walk through what the rates are and what locations have permits available at any given time.
There'd be signage in the ramp as well, right, for the fees?
Yeah.
For the rates, Level 5 would be signed at 15?
Yes.
And the top at 5? What are your thoughts, committee, on this one? Do you want to, do you want to act on this one tonight, or do you want to have a larger discussion about the other, other facilities, or do you want to just take care of this one, and then, you know, whatever happens at the other facilities as a result of some internal discussion? Bring that back separate? What are your feelings?
What are the other rates on the other floors? I was thinking 5, 10, 15, 20. But what's the rates on the other floors?
$38. 1 through 4 is $38 a month on Jefferson.
You know, we're, we're trying to balance the financial condition of our parking enterprises today and the needs of the downtown. And we have a lot of unknowns with the new system, because if you recall, we were only giving 2 hours free parking on the street. Now, everybody's gonna get 2 hours free parking everywhere. So, that is, again, going to be a decline in revenues. So, I'm a little concerned about too many big steps without understanding what the financial impact is going to be. I thought that, when we met with Mark, he was really happy with the $15 that we had negotiated, and now he wants more. So, I don't know how happy I am about that, frankly.
He looks happy, he looks happy with the 15, so.
I'll remember this, Mark.
If we would, I guess if we would, let's just say we move forward on the 15 for this, this particular section of this ramp, I think that.
Let's let it work. Let's let it percolate and see.
And get the new system up and running, and then if there is room for us to make some adjustments that are easy to work with, with passport, you know, for downtown employees, and maybe look at some underutilized sections of other facilities, once we know what the impacts will be? I mean, that's, that's, I think, an important point of analysis, is how many people want it, what would we charge, and what is the gain or loss?
This is a month, right?
It's a month.
Yes.
So, I mean, you could, you can act on this one tonight, and then if you wanted to have a larger discussion about other facilities, over the next few months, we certainly could have that. It would start within City Hall. We wouldn't do it on the committee floor until we've got a viable plan, one way or the other, for you guys to consider.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If, if the other ramps are, if the other levels are full, aren't people gonna have to go to this level if they want to find a parking place?
We do have some capacity in this ramp right now, so that's why we're suggesting we could try to perhaps get people who maybe aren't buying a permit today because they think it's too expensive to go to this level or. because they think it's too expensive to go to this level.
How can they park there without a permit? Are you saying people are avoiding that altogether and parking somewhere else because they don't want to pay the fifteen dollars?
They're in the streets and they run out and move them every couple hours, pretty, pretty commonly.
I thought our parking Nazi was supposed to be taking care of that and, you know...
They do, they do try to.
Yeah.
The new, the new system will too. I mean, the parking car will pick it up pretty fast.
They manage to find me all the time, surely they're finding somebody else.
I, um, I'm amazed that we charge anything on the top level. I mean, that's just like parking on the, on the street where it snows and everything. I mean, if I had my way, I'd say, okay, you can park up there for free, but the other levels you have to pay because they're covered. You don't have to scrape your car.
Well, five dollars is free, but it ensures that only cars that belong there, you know, like in the River Drive lot today, we have problems with people using that almost as, you know, like a salvage yard. I don't know what you would want to call it.
Well, if there's abandoned cars being left up there, that's not good.
Right, so, we don't want it to be used for abandoned cars, which basically you would be in that situation if it was absolutely free.
Well, but what do you have? My wife used to work for a law firm in the whole him and I building, and she had a little permit that she hung in her mirror. That's what these people get? They get a little permit that hangs there?
Today, they get a permit. When we go with the new system, they will purchase a parking permit online, and there will be no hang tag because their license plate becomes their permit because they register their plate, and that's how the system knows who's parking there.
Okay, and so the parking Nazi, he drives around, if it doesn't recognize that plate?
Correct.
What does he do? Find the owner up and beat him up, or what does he do?
Yes.
I'm all for that.
No, they give them a fine.
They issue them a ticket.
They give them a ticket, okay. All right.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, you know, you have the, I think the five-dollar a month on the top level is, it's, it's, it's reasonable enough that it shares you, you're, you can park downtown without getting a, a parking ticket, even though it is equivalent to parking on the street. But I, I, I also believe that the, there, the added benefit of having that cover over your, your vehicle on the, on the fifth floor, you know, that, that benefit, you know, for, for the fifteen dollars, I see is worthwhile. So, I'm going to make a motion that we go fifteen dollars on Level Five and then keep the roof at five dollars.
Okay, we have a motion from Martin, second, second from Mr. Nutting. Further discussion or questions? Go ahead, Dennis.
One, one other question on this new system we have, where people are going to be able to buy parking online through their smartphone and everything. Okay, so the people parking downtown, let's say I park in front of the Mint Cafe, and I buy, how many hours can I buy? Can I buy ten hours worth of time if I want?
No. Downtown on-street parking will continue to just be two hours free, and you cannot extend your time on the street. You'd have to move to a different location on the street.
Okay, so I couldn't extend it on my iPhone and say, okay?
Not today.
Otherwise, the guy can park there for months and...
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, thank you, that answered my question.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Nutting.
Do the vehicles have to move every day on the ramp spaces?
So, permit parkers will be able to just park wherever their permit is valid. And then, if you're a transient, I call them transient parkers, somebody who's just come to do some shopping, they will register at the pay station or on the phone app that they are going to park in the ramp, you know, like when they get there, and then that will give them their two hours free. And then if they want to extend that time, they can do that on their cellphone, basically, or from a computer. So, if they thought that their trip downtown was going to take them three hours and they, or two hours, and they registered for that two hours, they would receive a notice, "Your two hours is almost up. Would you like to extend?" They could say yes, or they could say no. And if they say no, then they have to get back to their car. If they say yes, they will ask them, "How much time do you want to extend it for? One hour, two hours?" And they can do that, and then they would be able to park.
Does the permit parker have a specific spot?
No, they would be able to park in any vacant spot, right.
As long as they're in the right ramp or in the right lot.
Does the permit parker have to move his car every day or leave the parking ramp?
No.
So, it could become a garage for long-term storage?
It could for, for long-term parkers, and that's really why we want them to pay something because then it, it prevents them from just leaving the car and basically abandoning it. They're going to pay something for that.
Thank you.
And it does have value. It's one cup of coffee a month.
Okay, one other question. Okay, the people parking in the ramp can extend their time from their phone, but not the people on the street?
Correct.
Okay, and it's all done by license plate, then?
Yes.
I'm going to get that James Bond car with the rotating plates. An Austin Martin DB6, I'll have it parked at Silverwood. It was parked right downtown.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, so with a motion and a second on the floor, then, members in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, so that motion carries as well. Item number eight is discussion and possible action regarding a 2019 budget modification for the Parking Lot Six paving project. And we've got some photos of what Parking Lot Six looks like. Yep, that's the one across from the, well, it's across from Sears, and, boy, it looks pretty rough. And we've got, let's see, it looks like we've got sole source documentation. No, that's the miniloader. We are the sole source. Okay.
So, yeah, we bid the, so we had three hundred thousand in the budget to do repairs at the Penny's Ramp, and the bids came in less than the three hundred...
Two forty-four, yep.
Right. So, we are asking if we could repurpose basically that money. So, we would still be spending it on parking improvements, just not in the Penny's Ramp. We would do the Penny's Ramp and Lot Six. Some of those holes are really deep and could, you know, be safety hazards for people walking, and there is quite a bit of spalling, and of course, as we pull out all the meters, that's going to degrade, you know, and create holes in the...
Well, and Lot Six has a decent amount of use. I mean, it's pretty well utilized. What are your thoughts, committee, to divert that savings from Penny's Ramp over to Lot Six?
Move to do, go ahead, move to make that motion for approving that, please?
Okay, we have a motion by Nutting. Is there a second? Second by Martins. Further discussion or questions? Go ahead, Dennis.
When, when the city signed this lease initially with this on this lot, I thought that was insane. Now I see the inmates have actually taken over the asylum. We're about to pave property we don't own, even though it's in the lease, and that's why I said the lease was insane. It seems to me that we could just patch some of those holes for maybe a few bucks and take some of that money and patch some of the puddles we got in the streets that people drive on every day. Is there any restriction? We couldn't use that money to do that?
I have to ask Eric.
I hear crickets.
We'll bring Eric up to talk about patching. I mean, as far as... Looks like it would need an awful lot of patch. I mean, if, if, what are we proposing? Like, like a skin, well, fill the holes and then skin patch it, or what?
Just, just so I'm clear, Lot Six, this is the one by the church, St. Paul's Church that kept, yeah, so... And I did get a call on this, you know, but we've, we, we haven't been in there yet just because we were planning on potentially doing this, you know, our discussions, and so with the lease. And we can go in there and patch it, but, you know, it's, it's a continual issue. And we did sign the lease. It was, we were going back and forth on that. We reduced the amount for that lease when we were going through that, and and then this is kind of what came out of that lease, was that we would repave it, and there is revenue that comes from it, so, and it will be one of the lots that has a kiosk, so there will be revenue generated from it.
Well, this does seem to be a lot that gets more public parking than church parking. I mean, there's times where it does have, it's full of church parking, but not near as often.
Right, and I think it, it seems like the church, you know, as I've just, you know, during the service days and stuff, you know, but like in the evenings and, and during the day, it seems to park up. I, I don't know.
It's full on Wednesday night in the summer.
And, and, you know, the city, for, you know, I've been here twenty-plus years, and the city has leased that facility for that twenty-plus year. So, we've not done any maintenance in my term of working in the city, so it's been, you know, twenty-five years, whatever, since the last time we did any maintenance on that. And the, and the lease has put that burden on us historically.
Dub tailing off of what Mr. Smith inquired, do you have enough to patch the holes that we have around the City of Wassa streets?
Yeah, I mean, we, we still have a budget that, that we're working through. I mean, we do only have two patch trucks. We just recently were able to track down another hot box to rent, you know. We're, I think we're starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel, but it's pretty small yet. I really don't think that, you know, I, I mean, I think you can see the thoroughfares and stuff, but the patch trucks are out almost every day, one on the east and one on the west, and hopefully we'll get the third one up and running, you know, and start making a little bit more headway, especially on the side streets and more of the residential areas, where we're really getting a lot of complaints, so... Our, our budget, the tons of asphalt and stuff that we're getting from the Hot Mix Plant, I think we're doing okay right now. So, I, I suppose that this could be diverted to that, but it's not going to, you know, speed up the process. Right, yeah, I mean, we only have so many people and so much equipment.
So, does this lot then get a two-inch overlay? I mean, we fill, fill the holes that are there and then put an overlay on it, or?
Yeah, we'll mill it up, and then we'll do any repairs of what's underneath, you know, where those holes are in the soft spots and stuff. We'll repack it, we'll repave it, and then re-strape it.
We can usually get ten, fifteen years out of that, right? Out of, I mean, when you do it on a street, you get quite a bit of extended life.
Right, this, this will probably last longer, just simply because, you know, it's just
It's not traffic.
Typical vehicle, traffic coming in and out. It's not heavy traffic, yeah.
I do think, talking to Dan, that they were thinking of doing a little stormwater work in this lot too because there is some drainage issues.
Right.
Well, maybe that's part of the trouble with the holes too, so... Okay.
Well, I'm certainly glad to hear that the situation has changed because unless I'm wrong, a couple of years ago, we were going to think about passing a wheel tax so we could fix our roads because we didn't have any money.
Well, I think the wheel tax, though, Dennis, that, that would be more for reconstruction of streets. I mean, we're just, we're just talking passion right now to get through, you know? You know, so we allocate Hot Mix and stuff, you know, just for routine maintenance and keep them drivable, you know, at this point. But there are roads in the city, I mean, we have about almost twenty-five million dollars of backlog of streets that need to be reconstructed, so that's a situation that we're in, and not just us, I'm, you know. But the wheel tax would have mainly been for reconstruction of streets.
If the streets, you know, we have a backlog of streets, you know, that need reconstruction, thus we must be maintaining those while they wait to be reconstructed, is that correct?
We're, we're trying to. Some of them, we just, there's not, there's nothing else we can do. If you, I mean, just for one example, is DeKalb Street in front of Lopnaus. I mean, we, there's just nothing else we can do to that street. You know, we, we just, it's all alligator that's gone, it's, it looks like gravel, so then we have some other ones.
I think you're doing the same thing on Sixth Avenue over by the college, too. Six or, yeah, I think it's six.
Pretty rough, yep.
Yeah. So, I, you know, those are, those are just some of the challenges that we have. You know, they, they put tons and tons of asphalt down on the connecting highways in town as well because we're responsible for maintaining those as well. But we have no reconstruction timeline for fifty-one or fifty-two in the city either from the DOT. We just had another discussion with them today, but it's not even on their seven-year list. Like, when you look at fifty-two, which goes up Sixth Street and then out east Wassa, that's not even on their seven-year list, so...
And there's some rough spots there.
There are, yeah.
That, that looked like, Sixth Street looked like a whole truck full of mix just, just there, so... Okay. Any, any additional discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second on this item to approve.
My last comment.
Yep.
So, so you're recommending that they wouldn't do any good to just patch these holes and take some of the other money and fix some of the streets? Do you think that the only way we can solve this is to, you know, tear everything up and resurface it and reline it? And can we do all of that for, what have we got, sixty, fifty-six thousand dollars or something like that?
Sixty, yeah, the estimate that Alan had gave would fit in there.
Okay, yeah, if that's what Alan had, had said. I don't remember exactly what that number was, but, yeah.
All right. I, I would say this picture here probably is pretty much a typical day on that lot. I've been down there a couple of times when we were discussing this before, various times of the day. And I'm sure that when a concert on the square, it fills up.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and that's great. That's, that's, how many times a month? I don't know how that happens.
Well, it's about, it's going, about to be ten or twelve times this summer, so...
Okay. So, that's ten or twelve times that we got this thing is stuffed to the gills. And the rest of the year, which is a number of months, it's probably got six or seven cars in it all day. So, I mean, it's, it's... Also, I would, I would have one other question. Since this church is renting this out and making a buck on it, does that change the tax status of this particular lot? Does it become taxable property?
Well, that would be a question for the assessor. The pictures I took were on a Wednesday at six-thirty, six P.M. So, that's the time of day that I took the pictures, just, you know. Yeah, that would be a question for the assessor. I don't believe, it's not taxable today. In the, our agreement with them says if it was taxable, we would pay the taxes.
The inmates have taken over the asylum, I swear.
Well, we pay the taxes on all the other lots that we rent.
Okay.
This is...
Okay, so with that, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Additional questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we'll record one no. Next item on our agenda is item number nine, discussion and possible action for sole source purchase requests from Public Works for a Cat miniloader. You've got that sole source paperwork in your packets. And does anybody have questions for Eric about that item? It looks like the expected purchase amount would be sixty-nine thousand. They've got some documentation attached for the sole source. If not, is there a motion to approve the sole source for the item?
What's this vehicle used for? Sorry.
This is, this is the miniloader that we've used for snow plowing over on Second Avenue with the brick and stuff that, that was placed there a couple of years ago. We also use it for leaf pickup in the fall to help us out. Part, part of the reason for the sole source is that we've rented this piece of equipment, and so he's actually reduced our rent costs from the actual purchase price down to sixty-nine thousand. So, he's given us credit for the time that we've rented that, which, which, you know, for us is great. You know, it's money that's not lost, and it's really worked out well for us around Second Avenue to do that work on those tight areas.
Well, and they take more, take care of more sidewalks every year, it seems like, for different areas, so...
Right.
Okay. So, do we have a motion then to accept the sole searches, sole source purchase for the miniloader? Motion by Kelbock, is there a second? Second by Smith. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. Thanks, Eric. Item number ten is our last item, discussion and possible action regarding our request for a waiver of fees for the fireworks permit and a picnic license for the Man of Honor Society annual community raffle celebration at the Eagles Club to be held June seventh to the ninth, two thousand nineteen. And you've got a request in your meeting packets from the Man of Honor Society requesting that those two fees be waived. I think we have waived some fees before. I think we've waived the, these fees, and then also we do some things for special event permits for parades and things, too, I think we have before, too, like for Labor Day and things like that. So, this one we have done in the past. Any questions about that? Do we have a motion to proceed with the waiver?
Move to approve.
Motion by Nutting, is there a second? Second by Smith. Further discussion or questions? Hearing and seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. So, that's the end of our finance agenda. A motion to adjourn would be appropriate. Motion by Smith, second by Kelbock. Members in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, we'll stand adjourned, and then City Council will convene in this chamber at six-thirty. Thank you, everyone.